For the Hagan Pool Facility. The constituents of this park district, and I'm not speaking just of the people who live in Rancho Cordova, want and have every right to expect the best possible complete facility remodel, not just the pools. The district has had, in my opinion, over a decade during which they could have, and I think should have, been pre-planning for this eventuality, and they waited until just the last couple of years. Hagan Pool being adjacent to the American River Parkway, which is well-known as a regional jewel, has so much to offer. The park has so much to offer with the barbecues, ballfields, dog parks, petting zoo, railroad, bicycle pass, go on and on. This pool, as part of that park, should stand out as a jewel all on its own. So I think we're missing a huge opportunity to not do everything that's humanly possible to get this pool back to some sort of shining glory position. In my heart, I'm positive that it can be done, but you guys are the ones that are in your positions and have the staff, the ability, the technical know-how or knowledge to pull people out and get that, get it all pulled together and taken care of. So Ms. Taylor spoke about the additional months it would take if we had to take a step back, and I think we're, if I might speak for everyone, I can't guarantee it, I think everybody's willing to do that. We know that. We wish that you had all started this a long time ago, and we would be farther ahead than we are now. But the 7.4 million that it might cost in today's dollars, I think we can get that 7.4 million with the amount of money that you're planning on spending, plus the amount of money that we think we can get from the city of Rancho Cordova if we could just get everybody to cooperate. The $7 fee, instead of a $2 fee, who's to say that we're not willing to pay that as well? And I think Dan's right. What we want you all to do now, as the people that we elected, is to please reject this current offer, take more time, and try and get us more of what we want. I know it sounds like staff is wanting you to just say, "We don't want to take any more time on this, just let's go with this." Your constituents would like you to take more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sussell. Ms. Jones?
Next, I'd like to call Ms. Isabel Lynch to the podium, and I've also received additional speaker cards. So following Ms. Lynch will be Ms. Mida Keshat.
Good evening, Ms. Lynch.
Hi. My name is Isabel Lynch. I am a swimmer and a lifeguard at the pool, and I'd like to bring up the question that everyone has been asking. Why would we not just take the money and create a new pool instead of just renovating it? So I'd like to take some of the points that have been, that have been stated, and add to them. So something that I've heard was building a pool that will cost a high entrance fee in a low-economy area may be a problem. Well, I think that, I think that right now, the $2 entrance fee is, is low and it's good, but people aren't coming because they don't see, they don't see the pool as something exciting to go to. They don't see it as something that they would want to, as something fun for their kids and the adults and just everyone in general. So I think even, even if it was, you know, even if it was a $2 fee, then nobody's going to come because it's, it's really not that exciting of a pool, and I think that if we completely rebuild it and we add the features and people see it as a jewel, then they would be willing to come from everywhere, and they would be willing to pay a higher fee. So I think, I think that that kind of sums it up. And then the next, the next thing I'd like to bring, bring up is the price of the pool project, and that renovating it would, renovating it would initially cost less.
One minute, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you. Initially cost less than just completely rebuilding it. Well, I think that in, if we renovate it in 10 to 15 years, we're going to have to, we're going to have to be fixing it up, and we're going to have to be dealing with the, dealing with the effects of, of the old pool underneath the renovation.
50 seconds.
So I think, I think building a new pool would, would help with, would initially cost more, but in the long run, I think it would, it would pay itself off. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Ms. Jones?
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Mida Keshat. Following Ms. Keshat is Laura Lansdiddle.
Good evening, Ms. Keshat.
Good evening. I'm going to, I've done something I've never done before. I've taken notes, and I know this is probably my downfall. What I wanted to talk about was the Hagan Pool, was the Hagan Park, and everybody said it's a gem of the American Parkway, which I agree. It also, with a fine pool there, would upgrade the ambiance of the park, and I think that's something that we should consider as, as you go forward. And I know that probably you have directed the staff to do certain things and to get this proposition going and working, and I think they've worked very hard on it. One thing that bothers me is that the cost of renovating a pool or a new pool, the, the information was by one company. That doesn't bode very well with getting a competitive bid on this. I don't know where your pool guy came from, but I would be very interested to find out why he wasn't here tonight. My husband was in the hospital today, and he's not here. Otherwise, you would have had another speaker card. Also, one thing I wanted to say is, in your mission statement, you have glorious adjectives, pronouns, verbs discovering your mission for the park. And if you continue on this track of renovation, I think your mission statement should, should read mediocrity, because you're not raising the bar very high. And I hope you, like my other colleague said, I hope you will stop this process and really build a quality.
One minute, Ms. Keshat. Thank you. Ms. Jones?
The final speaker card that I have is for Laura Lansdiddle.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm probably just going to say exactly what everyone else said, but I have taken the time to come to different meetings and taken the time to email people. And I think what you're hearing is a group of people who do not have a lot of confidence. And I realize that you wouldn't be here if you didn't care, but it is true that this park and the pool has needed repairs for some time. 18 months, having gone through this process, this process should have started five, 10 years ago, looking at how much money was going to be needed, what, when are you going to be able to do it, and planning ahead. Now that we're here, it sounds like you need to slow down and actually do it right. I have lived here since 2004. I've seen the city grow in amazing ways, and the Parks and, Parks Department has taken small steps to improve, but I do not see parks that I can be proud of, parks that I want to invite my friends to and say, "Hey, let's go." Whether you redo the entire pool or you just renovate it, you need to do it well. It can't be somebody coming in and putting kind of a okay cement job and an okay fence here and a roof on an old restroom. My daughter is 10 years old. She didn't, she was not on the Blue Marlins. I love that I see all these Blue Marlins families. I took her to a different swim team. She is now on the synchronized swimming team. It is a wonderful community. I know that the park and rec have done wonderful things to support the swim team and the synchronized swimming and all of the programs within the city. I work with children. I love that. I appreciate it. But if you don't step forward and actually take time to do something very well, and people still are not going to want to come here. And I think that the city is pushing us in that direction. I think the people who are moving here expect that, and they're willing to support it, and I would just like to see that the park and rec would go ahead and take the time to truly think about it, to truly do a good job, what all of the children and all of the families in Rancho Cordova need. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Herwood. Any comments back to the public on, or to staff on anything that was said tonight?
Not at this time, no.
Director Rais?
I'm a little upset at how you all think that we don't know what we're doing, how you all think we have no interest in getting the best that we can get. You know, when you have a house and a beautiful piece of property, you have a foundation, okay? And somehow or other, there seems to be a total trust on what the city is telling us to do, okay? I mean, we're not a park and rec team. Our staff, you know, we may not be out there pushing. We know what we are doing. I have been on this board since 2006, and I will tell you that there is no way you could have even thought about fixing up the pool with the finances that they had at that time, okay? So I just, you know, I sit down, I'm listening, it's not, it's so, I feel kind of like, hey, you know, you don't know what you're doing, your staff doesn't know what you're doing, we don't trust what you're doing, you don't have any beautiful parks. We do. We have beautiful parks. We have built parks. We finally are getting there, and we don't have people like the developers and all that that question our abilities. I mean, I don't understand why you simply, where you're getting all your information that it's just a patch-up, renovated. I mean, because that's not, from my point of view, that's not what I'm expecting, that's not what I've communicated, and that's not what I'm expecting, okay? So I, I don't know. It's almost like, can't wait till it's done, and then will you be back here to tell us we've done a good job and it's something different? Or will you just enjoy it? I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I've heard this. It's almost like, when would you take our word that we can produce? When the city says we can? I mean, I, it's almost like, hey, you know, you don't know what you're doing. You know, you don't know what you're doing, the city knows what they're doing, the city know. I have held it, okay? But it's about time I can give as much passion out there, and it's about time I express myself too. Because I will tell you, we work very, very, very hard. We do not, you know, we do not say, "Hey, just build a, a patch-up job." You question the, the professionals that we have gone through. We go through the process. It is not just, this is the first guy that came up, okay? We know the person that the city has pulled in. Unfortunately, he didn't get the bid, okay? He did not get the consulting fee to do. You can't all be doing it, using the very same one and be doing it all. I mean, we don't tell the city what, how to build a road, you know? So I'm just, I'm just saying this because our staff is competent. They are doing a good job. We will not, not on my, my accord and my knowledge here, we're not going to just deliver you a patch-up job. At the same time, we're also being very, very responsible with the monies, your monies and the monies of the $180,000 that we serve, okay? We're doing the best. I will tell you, this discussion did not start two years ago. I sat with city council people, and we discussed this for the good of the community, okay? And so it's not just an afterthought, oh gee. We actually worked very hard to say, "How can we find ways to be able to fix this for the community?"
I think your three minutes are up.
Excuse me, but I need to tell you something. I sit on the board. I don't have minutes. Thank you.
Yes, I, I have a couple of comments with regard to when this process should have started many, many years ago. I can't disagree with that. But working in the park district world, I can tell you that when the real estate downturn happened, the revenues of public agencies that depend on property taxes, such as our own, were just devastated, and it was difficult just to keep the lights on. And starting a large project 10 years ago was really not feasible based on that. I would also like to, without being overly defensive, mention that most of the staff that you see here have not worked for the park district for 10 years, that our administrator is just in his fourth year, and this process was started relatively early in his tenure. So I don't think that the people you see in front of you are the same people that weren't reacting to the conditions at the pool 10 years ago or more. We would love to access as many resources as we can to give you as much as we can. I have to say that when you're talking about $4 million as a renovation, you're really not talking about cutting out a piece of concrete and slapping a patch in there. That is not what this RFP calls for at all. It calls for a lot more work than that. I have, however, my concerns about not enough work on the restrooms being included in this RFP. If they're not genuinely, you know, usable and safe and clean and attractive, people don't want to go in them. And in a pool complex, I think the restrooms are important. So I would disagree that a, the kind of renovation that's being proposed here is insufficient or just a patch job. I would disagree with that, but I would like to see perhaps a way to make the restrooms a bigger part of the project.
Thank you, Secretary Lineback. Vice Chair Sloan?
We're talking about a historical facility that's been around for 50 years. People have grown up there, they've learned how to swim there, they've gone on to teach classes there, they've, they've gone on to higher education. This, this foundation is, is full of history. To take it and demolish it and start all over and to think we really want something like Folsom has, I've been up there to Folsom, I don't like it. To me, it's very commercialized, it's very restricting, you can't bring anything in there, you got, they, they check your bags, and, and it is expensive. And my kids, they love Hagan Pool. They grew up there, playing there. I didn't. I didn't grow up in Sacramento. I grew up down in Los Angeles. But the community pools were a lot of, a space that I grew up in. And the Hagan complex, I wish we had a, the architect here or some type of a, you saw what the, the picture looked like. We're not, we're not going to be doing a facelift. We're doing a pretty much new complex here with the existing skeletal structure, and it's going to be beautiful. I've got a house that has a pool, and I recently refurbished the, we surfaced it, and it's beautiful. We're not just going to take it and make it into a, a, just a so-so facility. We're talking about shade things, and, and I totally agree with the, the restrooms. I mean, if we can come up with some type of a plan with the city to help us finance more restrooms, better restrooms, that might be worth, that might be worth the conversation. But this facility is, is going to be, and I, I, I will quote, quote, unquote, state-of-the-art when it's done, and you guys are going to be very, very happy, and I, I will state my reputation on it. I know, I know what we can do here. We have the capabilities, and I don't think, we're, we're going to build a beautiful, beautiful place that your kids and their kids are going to grow up at and have this historical site that is still got the, the, the ghosts that walk around it. And a board member that used to sit on this facility, on this board, Kay Nickerson, she spent many, many years at that pool, teaching kids the synchronized swimming, and that is, you know, I, I can see, one, one day we're going to dedicate a portion of that, of that pool complex to Kay Nickerson, and she would be very, very happy that, that still we use that same structure that we've got right now. And please, I mean, I, I can't tell you to trust, but the most important thing about a relationship is trust, and that's, and that's what goes beyond building pools, and it goes beyond cities and, and park districts. And we are in the business of creating facilities that are award-winning, and I will also state on my reputation that we will win awards with this new facility, and you will be smiling and happy, and you won't get sunburned because we're going to have shade out there. And I, I really will. I will push whatever I can for the new bathrooms, or much better bathrooms, clean. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sloan. Some of my comments tonight, you know, there was only two people who did bid on this, this project. We, we picked the one that was more, more to what, what our needs were. The, my understanding is the city picked up the one that we didn't pick up and now is throwing some different information in there. So, you know, it's not, we went to one person and said, "This is what we want." We didn't open a phone book, grab somebody. We put it out there for 21 days, I believe, is what, what we have to put it out there for by law. Correct, Ms. Taylor? Or a minimum of?
Flex, the bid period can be flexible, but you'd want a minimum of a good three weeks so that you can reach all the prospective bidders.
So, you know, we've done our due diligence there. We went out and, you know, reached for that, you know? We, we did that part of it. $2 entry fee, it's, I mean, when I grew up in this community, it was a quarter. It's, it's only gone up a, a small fraction in my 40 years in this community. Would I like to see it higher? No, I don't want to see it higher, but I don't want to see it to the point where, you know, only certain people can, can deal with this. We're talking about, you know, we haven't talked about this, we've only started talking about this. My first day with the district, the day I was sworn in, I went to the district administrator at that point, David Edmonds, and the price that he gave me five years ago, just over five years ago, was $18 million for this project. Two years later, Doug Gritsfield was in charge at that point, or a year, year later, actually, gave, gave us a $12 million project. Now we're five years in, and now it's a $4 million project for pretty much the same, same project. You know, it's, it's kind of tough to see that, and it was stated in a city council meeting that it was known since 1988 that, that the pool had been leaking. It, it's kind of hard to, to sit there because in 1992, 93, 94, ERAF happened to the park district, and we lost lots of our money. You know, they, they knew back in the 80s this, this, this problem happened. We, we turned around and we kept something alive that probably should have died in the 80s. And if it would have died in the 80s, when they knew the problem happened and they didn't pay for it then, we wouldn't be having this discussion because that pool would have been filled in and it would not have existed. So I commend the staff that has been here, working on this for so many years, trying to keep it alive. You know, they, they've done a tremendous job because, I mean, and we're talking, that's quite a few years to keep, keep something alive that should have died in the 80s. But we've, we've spent a lot of time on this. We've continued to talk to people, and we will continue to talk to people. There, there's a slide here. Ms. Taylor, can you go back a couple of slides? There's one on the goals for the pool. You know, it, it says to bring things up to code, including restrooms passed. You know, when I was a kid, those restrooms looked the same, and they, they haven't been the best. I, I think everyone, well, almost every one of us up here has agreed that the bathrooms need to be fixed, but there's a lot of other things that need to be fixed, because if we don't have a pool, there's, there's no restrooms to be had. And we have to look at things economically, we have to look at things as the big picture. If we, if this district were to stop and only concentrate on that pool, we, we could. We could do that, but we're going to hurt the rest of the district because there's not going to be any green grass, there's going to be tall weeds, there's going to be a lot of different things that are going on that will not happen anymore. But we could grand easily give you that perfect, perfect pool complex, which don't know what that is, because everybody, every person sitting out in this room and up on this dais here has a different idea of what that perfect pool complex is. It, it's really hard to sit up here and be told that I'm wrong. It's, it's not, not a great, great thing. This district, this board has done our due diligence to get this where it needs to be. The patch job that I've been told over and over and over again, you know, if we want to talk about patch jobs, drive down Folsom Boulevard. Look at, look at where they, the city just put in all these brand-new lights. That's where they've turned around and ripped up concrete, put a light pole in and patched the concrete. We're not talking about doing that. We're talking about every square inch of that concrete being redone. You know, it's, it's not just, oh, let's just slap it done. This is, this has taken us a lot of time, and there's still been no decision what we're going to do. There's no decision on financing, there's no decision on this, any of, anything. This is all discussion still. Many things could still change, or nothing could change. So I commend the staff and I commend the board for what we've, what we've gone through, and I, you know, right now, I'd say, continue to charge on with what, what we've got, and we'll relook at things in January, because we don't know what the final design's going to be. We have no clue.
I'm not, I'm not so sure, but the, the Aquatic Center up in Folsom, they might have added some of that, the extracurricular activity things later on than when it was developed, like the slides and all the other, the things. So, I mean, there's, there's no saying that in the future, we can't put a slide out there, a water slide, and maybe, you know, that might be just a little, an extra dollar to be able to go down the slides, instead of, you know, the $4 they charge more to use the slides or whatever it is, the middle pool at the, up in Folsom. So that's all, that's all I can say, and I'd love to talk with anyone who was outside the meeting, just come up and talk to me.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sloan. I think that can, Administrator Orem, do you have anything to say at this point?
Uh, no, not at this point.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to thank staff for their presentation this evening. Our, once again, our apologies for the engineer. As some of my board members mentioned to me coming in tonight, the roads are definitely not in the greatest of shape this evening, so we do understand delays, and we're going to hope to at least bring them back in that process so that there can be additional questions asked. I know he will make himself available for that, and we will make sure that we reschedule and coordinate. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Administrator Orem. Let's move on to item E, committee reports. E1, ad hoc, annual evaluation of the district administrator, December 7th, 2015. It was myself and Secretary Lineback. I will let you start, ma'am.
Oh, I forgot to take notes, but we did go over the previous year's evaluation form and with Andrea, and came up with what we hope are some improvements to it, and something that's clearer for our district administrator. We're definitely going to use a scoring mechanism. You will, however, receive one evaluation from the board, I believe included, and it will be your own evaluation of yourself, and that's what I have.
Great. Thank you, Secretary Lineback. The reason this, this got brought up, and we created the ad hoc committee is, so we had a single evaluation to give the administrator over the, over the past couple of years that he's been here. He's gotten evaluated differently every time, so I tried to create, along with Secretary Lineback, a just, not plain, but very easy, understandable evaluation, and so at the end, he, the administrator, whoever it happens to be, has one voice. He's not hearing five voices, or she's not hearing five voices. He's not hearing five voices, or she's not hearing five voices. And some of the things that, that, you know, the board has, the board has gotten a chance to give input on this, on this information, on this ad hoc. It was not just myself and Secretary Leinbach saying, this is what we're going to do, let's do this thing. We gave the board a chance to, to throw in ideas that they, they might want. We did talk, we did discuss those, felt that there was some, some things that could be added out of those interests. But it gives the administrator a chance to, the one thing that I felt that needed to be changed the biggest is that we evaluated the administrator on a point system. And the administrator, in, in the current way it was written, he would, or she would turn around and hand us how they felt they did for the year. Well, it, it was, you had to really read what, what the administrator was saying to try and figure out, did they, did he feel he met his goals for the year? So, we've changed that, or hopefully we'll change that to the point where we evaluate him, and he also evaluates himself the same way, but still has the opportunity to put, put in that piece of paper to change, you know, to say, this is what I did. And then also, one of the other changes was that if we did not score the administrator perfect on the point system, we needed to be able to turn around and explain what would get the administrator to the next level and how we needed to do that. And then at the onset of when this is being done, the chair will pick a person to be the person who's going to turn around and take all, all five of ours, plus the administrator's evaluation, and put them all together into one document and with the full rating system so we can see how that works. I just, I felt it was better. I know, sitting down with Secretary Leinbach, it, it seemed to make more sense to do that. I know I, we did hear from a couple of the other board members on things, and like I said earlier, we, we looked at them and felt some of them were definitely worth putting into that evaluation. And Ms. White is still compiling all that information and trying to get it to us. So, I believe January, well, hopefully before January, we can see it and get it out. That way, we can approve it on, in January, that this would be the new format for the district administrator, because it does put us in a crunch, crunch at that point to, to, you know, get Administrator Orem's at this point evaluated. Director Rais?
Yeah, Chair Danzel. So, the, the next action here is that we'd be provided with a draft.
Yes.
So that then, as a board, we can discuss it, we can understand it, we can follow the, give our comments and all that.
Correct.
And then after that, as a board, we approve?
Well, you've had chances to, you've had chances to, to give, give that, or, you know, but it'll be, there'll be a draft that Ms. White will give us, and then hopefully that's really close to a final. But, and I'm hoping to get that right after Christmas, if I remember correctly, so we can have that distributed to the board. We have, you know, about a week to look at it, give it, go back to Ms. White, ad hoc sits, sits back down and says, okay, this is Director Rais' notes, this is Director Yerwood's notes, Vice Chair Sloan's notes, this is how, and our notes, is the committee itself put together that final, and then hopefully in January, it almost has to be done in January, that evaluation form. Any questions on that? Great, thank you. Let's move on to item F, Regular Calendar. Administrator Orem.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. We have three items on the regular calendar this evening. Item F1 is to authorize the district administrator to execute a revised memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with Union Sacramento FC, formerly Capital Athletic Soccer Academy, or CASA, for the use of Larchmont Community Park. And with that, I will introduce Diane Robinson.
Good evening. So, before you have the revised MOU, and rather than read through this, I just wanted to get you up to speed. Both Brian Hendricks, Supervisor Two at Mather in Charge of Sports, and myself, has been meeting with both the soccer club and with the College Green East Homeowners Association to, to kind of make sure that we're all on the same page and understanding what's going on, or as Kate has been saying, agree to disagree. And this MOU is really just guidelines. It's, it's to help us to have a little more control over what's happening in our fields. What we've come to learn over the last couple of years is from the past, and we do need to monitor and take control over what we're doing. So, our new permit system through Active Net is going to help us a lot. Union Sacramento will be turning in on a quarterly basis. Their requested times and dates, Brian will be, and Jason will be either accepting or not, but it's on those permits that we will have the specific details that they're allowed to do or not do, the times that they are allowed to use it, or not allowed to use it. I do want to make a correction on the, the second page under the fiscal impact. Last year for 2015, it should show that we brought in $5,000 from Union FC. And while some people may say that's a low number, we also take into account the amount of work that they put into the fields beyond the mowing. They, they do put a lot of man-hours and a lot of money into those fields. So, at this point, if there's no questions.
Got a public comment, if there is any, Ms. Jones?
Chair Danzel, I have three speaker cards, but before I call anyone to the podium, I just want to draw your attention to an email received this afternoon from Ms. Rosenleeb, and I have distributed that at the dais.
Great. Has the board had a chance to read this email? Is that a yes? It's a yes. Director Rais? Vice Chair Sloan?
Nope.
I'll give, give you a minute real quick to. Give you a minute to, to read through that before we go on.
I'm very familiar with Kate and her needs.
We'll get to that when we get to that. We'll get the speakers first, then we can ask questions. Ms. Jones?
My first speaker is Kate Rosenleeb. After Ms. Rosenleeb will be Mr. Pete Spalding.
Good evening, members of the board, staff. Board Member Rais, it bothered me to hear your frustration tonight, and I want to start off saying what a fabulous job staff has done on this in the last week. They've just knocked my socks off. I'm impressed and I'm thankful. It doesn't mean I agree with everything. And I, and I want to tell you, and I'm going to be quite honest, you have a new staff person in Mr. Hendricks, and, and he looks at me and says, trust me. And I want to. He really elicits that kind of response out of people, and I don't mind telling you, I'm afraid. I'm scared. I'm scared when I look at a proposal that says there's going to be soccer seven days a week, up to every single day of the year. And that's a little scary for me. We had asked for five or six days of soccer usage out there, and the proposal was seven. We'd asked for no more than three fields of play, and the proposal's four. I've learned a lot, trying to be flexible, trying to be supportive of youth soccer, but I'm trying to be supportive of my neighborhood and their needs too. And I'm thinking that we kind of have a little arrangement, maybe, with Mr. Hendricks, that he's going to try to put forth a facility use permit, and that we'll kind of look at it in three months and see how it's working. And, and I hope we're at the table again so we can give some input. I think that maybe we, we can fine-tune this, and of course, you know how it is, we're never going to make everybody happy, but I'm, I'm encouraged, I'm very encouraged. The one thing about the MOU in itself that really bothers me even now is I wish I understood a little better why. I feel like the county has offered us an opportunity, when they offer us to look at a, you know, traffic management plan for this, for this usage on, especially on tournament days, but on higher use days. I feel like that's an opportunity, and I'm not sure why we're not seizing on that. You know, I worry that a child's going to be hit out there sometime, and it could be a soccer kid, it could be one of our neighborhood kids. I, I want us all to be able to show that we've done absolutely everything that makes sense, and I just think it makes sense when the county offers to have a transportation.
Thirty seconds.
When the county offers for a transportation planner to look at this and be sure we've done everything right, that makes sense to me. It makes more sense than what's in this MOU that says we'll have, you know, attendance looking at traffic. I mean, to me, attendance is who parks your car. But thank you very much for everything you've done to get us here to this point. We like to joke and say Mr. Rodham's had dark hair when we started this process.
Thank you, Kate. Ms. Jones?
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Mr. Pete Spalding. After Mr. Spalding will be Sandra Millet.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. Thanks for letting us come back again and speak before you tonight. I want to reiterate what Kate did say about the helpfulness of your staff. We had some meetings that were pulled together pretty quickly, where we feel like we're being heard. I wasn't able to attend the meeting in person this week, I guess it was, earlier this week, and they let me participate by phone, so I really appreciate that. I think that, again, the College Green East Homeowners Association is adjacent to the Larchmont Community Park on two sides, on Linda Rio and also on Rio Bravo. We, I, I think that the, the MOU that we've had, the dialogue that we've had, has been really helpful. We're starting to understand each other better, understanding how the, the soccer tournaments run. And there's, there's a couple of things that are much better in the MOU. Number one, there's only one tournament a year. We really appreciate that, it's come down. And during the use of the tournaments, there's only going to be four fields, a maximum of four fields. We understand there's a staggering of teams in and out, and, and it's up to the soccer company to make that work. We are concerned about the weekday use, though, about the, the fields, up to four fields being used. Basically, every day that we, every, every weekday is quite a bit, but we also know now that we've got the ability to influence a facility use permit and, and review that, and we will that. We'll be watching out really, really carefully on that. As, as Kate mentioned, there's a lot of trust right now, and there's, we hope that things are going to work out, but I was recently in a colleague's office at work, and he's got a little sign on his desk that says, "Hope is not an effective strategy." And I want to, I realize we just can't hang everything on hope. We'll be, we'll be watching out, and we'll be, we'll be looking, and looking forward to working with both the staff here, as well as with the soccer folks. We keep saying that we weren't quite as skilled as the, as the boss family here with our audiovisual aids, and we keep saying that we're trying to squeeze 20 pounds of potatoes into a 10-pound sack. So, next time when we come back, we'll have the things, because that's what we're really trying to do here. We're trying to put a lot of people that are really having a lot of fun into a small area that wasn't designed to accommodate all that.
Thirty seconds.
But we'll work with you as best as we can to, to try to handle that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Chair Danzel. My final speaker card on this item is Sandra Millet.
Good evening, Ms. Millet.
Good evening, and happy holidays, everybody. I, I have to say, we've been here a year, and I want to especially say thank you to, to Ms. Leinbach and Mr. Sloan for attending our HOA meeting, as well as yourself, and listening, and listening. I want to thank, first of all, this has been the most exciting meeting I've ever had with you guys, cupcakes and paper. Okay, it's great. And you know what? We met Brian, and he told me I wasn't going to be happy. You know what? I'm not. But I don't want to stab a soccer ball, okay? I want to thank the staff for the communication that has, that we've, we've felt, and you're going to be grading your administrator. As a retired teacher who's done a lot of papers grading, I'm going to tell you something. He has continually been reaching out, changing, assuring us of, of changes that he wants to make, and changes that our district needs to make. Because I've been in Sacramento since there was dinosaurs, so, you know, it's been a long time, and I like seeing the change. Sorry about the leak in the pool, Brian, and I know you guys are going to do a good job. You guys, being later in the agenda, you guys are amazing and very patient, and, and you are hearing us, you are hearing us, and, and hope is not a good, is not a good strategy, but communication is, and trust is. And I think as long as we're in a review process and communicating, and we are at the table, I think this can work well. Because for a year, we've been meeting, we didn't feel heard, but you guys kept plugging. We will too. We will be watching, and I want to thank, first of all, my neighbors, as well as our board members, staff members, everybody, for, you know, making this, instead of, okay, we've retired our pitchforks and torches.
One minute.
Okay? And we're talking. Thank you, thank you. I hope this process continues, and I'm not his mom.
Thank you, Ms. Millet. Ms. Jones? Any other cards?
I have no further speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to turn this over to staff.
Yeah, I just wanted to have Brian come up and give some points. I know that he was in discussion with the soccer league today a little bit. Just want to clarify a few things about the number of fields and the times of play. If you could do that for the board, Brian, I'd really appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Hendricks.
Good evening. Once again, Brian Hendricks at the Mather Sports Center. Yes, there's been a lot of communication, and even last night when we were talking, after the meeting, I met with Ed from the Union Sacramento FC, and after listening to the HOA, is decided to even communicate with them that I believe that there should have been even more of a decrease than what we were talking about at the table last night with the entire group. So, the layout is to start off for spring, is starting in March, the soccer group would have Monday through Friday for practices, let me rephrase that, Monday through Thursday for practices out at the Larchmont Fields. Friday would be just one field, field number one, which is, I'm not sure the street that it's on with, what's the, the main street right in front of it?
Linda Rio.
Linda Rio? So, that would be field number one. On Fridays, from 4:00 to dusk, that would be used for practices, just that park. So, the rest of the park will be open. Saturdays, from 8:00 to 4:00, which is a reduction, because in years past, they would go till 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night sometimes. So, we'd go from 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 PM with soccer, with a maximum of four fields, but after communication with Union FC, that that four fields, you know, may happen, a lot of the, the regular time would probably be a standard of three fields, and, but the four would be the capacity max that we put in the MOU. But I believe that's not going to be a standard, every weekend you're going to see four fields. We ran into, when I first started here, the weekend tournaments, there was two tournaments that we were sort of unaware of by Union FC, and they had six games out there, and that's way too many fields to be out at that complex, I believe. So, the four maximum on Saturdays. Sundays, we're going to limit to just one field again, field number one, and that would be from 8:00 in the morning until 2:00 PM. So, in, after 2:00, there'll be no soccer use out at, on Larchmont Field. So, there is a huge reduction. There is also, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult for the soccer because they're, they're growing, they have a lot of kids, and we are trying to accommodate them at Mather, but we're also, you know, really full too, because we have a lot of other soccer agencies that want, you know, use of our fields. So, you know, it is something that Union FC is, it's going to be a challenge for them for scheduling, but at the same time that they are working with us and the community to try to accommodate some of the, you know, the traffic issues and things like that. So, there is a reduction, and I will be monitoring it, myself, staff, communication, you know, I'll be communicating with Pete and obviously Kate, and we'll, we'll go from there. I'll be communicating with Pete and obviously Kate, and we'll, we'll go from there, and when their next request comes in for the summer session, you know, we'll, I'll look at it and see if there needs to be more reductions, or if we're good, or maybe we can add some more time back, but we'll go from there. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Any questions, Mr. Hendricks?
Yeah, so with the Monday through Thursday, will they be practicing on four fields? Is that the plan?
I mean, but usually, in the past, they haven't been out there, I mean, it's, the coaches come out and they schedule, I really can't answer that question, so I don't know exactly, but I would, even on the four fields, you're still going to have portions of the park open, because the four fields is not going to accommodate, because to accommodate that whole capacity with six fields. So there's still going to be portions, but I couldn't foresee, it's going to fluctuate the time of the seasons, but I wouldn't see, I mean, all the entire park full of practices.
Well, it's interesting, because before I even saw this email, I wrote down here, well, four fields could facilitate possibly eight teams practicing, because I noticed they split the fields, and that's eight teams out there practicing at the same time as a lot of people out there. And I walked out there a few months back to kind of watch what was going on. They had a lot of kids out there, so.
And, you know, and they may put more than one team or two teams out there, because like, for instance, at Mather, there are times where we, there are as many as six teams on one field, because they'll go the width. So they'll try to accommodate the space that most they can. But I don't see the congestion or any issues, anything compared, like, the tournament's a whole different animal, and that restricting them to one tournament a year, you know, it's going to be one tournament a year that we'll have to work with, and we'll, they already notified us that they think it's going to be in August, so we'll be prepared, and we'll communicate with HOA and everything else like that.
Okay. And one other question I had is, so with this fee they pay us, do, they're paying this just once a year, or, because in the world of youth soccer, I know that there's a fall league, there's a spring league.
So what we do, and that's why the numbers, when Diane gave you the numbers, over the last couple of years, they fluctuate, is we wait until their last fall season is over. So, and they're very punctual, right on time, they are by far of all our other user groups the best for organization and paying on time and providing us documents. But we wait until the end of the fall season, because then we know that there isn't going to be any more additional kids for that year. Once we know that there's no more registration, then they send us, and they just, we just received the first organization since I've been here that we've been asking for documentation of rosters to prove the actual numbers. They provided that with us this week, along with the check a couple of weeks ago to match the numbers.
The only reason I ask this is because, because the kids who play necessarily in the fall league aren't the same ones playing in the spring league. They do changeovers, they're playing U.S. clubs, they're playing CYSA, or whatever they call it now.
So pretty much a standard in the past has been in December, so at the end of fall ball, and that's a whole year cycle.
So we're just, for, even though they're playing multiple league seasons out there, we're only charging them once a year for them?
The way that the MOU was set up in 2013, the way that it has continued, is the one-time participant fee of the $10 per child that's playing in the program.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Director?
Well, yeah, one more, is there, and I, somebody may have answered this, is there a reason why we don't put some more of these specifics in the MOU, like your discussion with them about when they can use the fields, the days, the things like that? Is there a reason why we don't put that in there?
I think, I can answer that. The reason we don't put that in an MOU and prefer to put that in the facility use is the flexibility. The times can change, the methods can change, you know, we, we know that from season to season, things will change for them. Great, great example is the combination of two clubs about a year or so ago that elevated those numbers, and, and it gives Brian the flexibility to really, to watch and be able to change the facility use to make sure it meets the, the spirit of the MOU. We don't like to put a ton of accurate, or I shouldn't say accurate, we don't like to put a ton of specifics in MOUs in general to provide flexibility for both the district and the user. Same exact way our little league MOUs are written, they're very similar in that respect.
Okay. All right. And what will they be doing with one field on Friday night? Is that practice? Is that games? Is that?
On the Friday nights, practice.
Okay.
The Friday nights, practice, the only one's going to be games, is Saturdays will be games, and then in the past, where they've been having clinics and games out there in years past, they're going to be limited to one field with the option of either a game on that field, or a clinic, or a practice, but just there. And I just want to also clarify one thing that was a concern, the HOA, is some of the soccer players were utilizing the tennis courts to dry their shoes when the weather did get poor. That's been addressed, and, you know, hopefully through the management of the Union Sacramento FC, that's not going to be an issue. The park, I believe, is going to be a lot more open for the community use to use.
I don't know, I'd like to see them paying per season, but that's, that's me.
Are you done, Director? Director Raisin, you had a comment?
Well, I had a question for clarification, and I think it was the same thing that Kate had mentioned. When I was reading this, and it says here, "Union Sacramento FC agrees not to sublet facilities without the knowledge and written permission of CRPD." So what I needed to understand was, who do they sublet to that they, you know, that they would, you know?
Can I ask that?
Yeah.
So we, we've had the issue with some of our other organizations, our other sports organizations, we have MOUs with, and for instance, those two tournaments that happened when I first got here, those were sublet to other soccer organizations to run those two tournaments. That was something that shouldn't have been done, and that is what we're talking about when, then they have somebody, like, for instance, we had like, Union Sacramento Republic, or, excuse me, Sacramento Republic, they came out and did a clinic one time on the fields. That shouldn't have happened, that's subletting. So that is things that they realize that they cannot do, we've run into problems with other youth groups, and, and so that has been clarified.
So if that's the case, then why can't we just have it as Union Sacramento FC agrees not to sublet, period? Why are we saying without the knowledge and written permission of CRPD? Because if probably there were a need to bring in another, you know, a partnership, they could probably, they should run it through CRPD. But this kind of sounds like they can sublet, and then talk a deal about subletting, and then bring it to you. So I don't understand that.
The issue really comes from the fact that we do, in one business, one industry, we used to call it the liar's surcharge. There's, there's an issue where they may be co-promoting, and, and as such, we would take a look at that in, in this same fashion. It's really the language that's pretty standard. You know, we would say, basically, it does, the language does the same thing. If they want to propose something to us that we would take a look at and might allow or bring to the board for consideration, this allows us to do that. So it's not a blatant you cannot, period, and we won't accept it. If they're trying to partner, if they're trying to do something of that nature, if they're doing something that might generate more revenue for the district as well, we would want to take a look at that and look at their proposal. This allows them to do, at least have that, that dialogue with us. It's rare that we would accept a sublease that is through another organization for many purposes, and would prefer to contract directly if it's use of the facility. That's every other facility except this one, because what we don't want to do is add to the schedule of this one. So any use that would occur would happen during the times that they currently would have as a facility use, and not in addition to, that's the other issue. So we leave that language in there for flexibility as well.
It's a little confusing, and I think I.
Director Rais, it would be because this Union FC has got the field, so nobody else can, can rent it, because if they put in their facility use permit, they're the only ones who could use it. Well, sometimes opportunities fall in your lap. I mean, I know when I ran St. John Vanny Soccer, we had a, Mr. Director, what's that British company that used to come in and?
Challenger?
Challenger would come in, and that would be considered a sublease. Well, they come in for a couple of weeks during the summer and do it, but if I already have the time blocked out in my facility, they can't even come talk to the district because the time's already booked out. So this gives them an opportunity to come and say, hey, you already have the field rented, X amount of hours, I can't get on it, can I, can I use it to run this program at that point? And then we, then we would get involved at that point, because if you block those fields, when I had Hagan Park for St. John Vanny, we had it from 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM, seven days a week, nobody else could get on that facility, because we had a permit, and nobody ever tried, because they couldn't get on it.
Well, couldn't they go through, I mean, CRPD? I mean, is it, in other words, that it's blocked, and if they're not using it, CRPD could not, does not have, because of the MOU, that CRPD does not have the ability to talk to them about, you know, someone else using it if they didn't have anything scheduled in it, even if they had it blocked? That's, I mean, if this is contract language.
That's essentially what they're doing there, but they're going through the club, and the club is saying, hey, we've got this opportunity, well, you allow it, versus them also, because now we're playing the backward circle.
So, yeah, so it is important that, with the community, and it does probably mean that the facility's use is, it's really important, we work so hard with the community and all that, and then all of a sudden, and, and one of the things that I heard them say was the fact that, which I know you addressed, is that the Union FC had done things that we personally, we, CRPD, would not have allowed them to do, because they just seemed to have control. You know what I mean? And so I just want to make sure. But if this language is language that, I guess, that will allow us to control that, but respecting the fact that if they've got it blocked and they're not using it, we can't.
And the one thing we also want to reiterate is something that's new, is when we do, when I approve that the dates they'll be using, I'm also requesting that they will be sending us schedules, so we'll know what's happening in our parks. That hasn't been done before. It's just been, you know, this is the, you know, the times that they're out there using, but we want to be more know what is happening. Is it league games? Is it practices? Things like that. So we could inform, some of it will change depending on weather, but, so we could inform the public.
Any other questions, Mr. Hendricks? Secretary LaMotta?
And so hypothetically, is it true that they could be using the field 365 days a year?
They won't. They could, but they won't. There's not that usage. So no. I mean, it depends on what we agree to, to let them use it. So they turn in a request, and then we submit back what we, give them the authority, but that is the maximum. There's going to be times out there where they're not going to have people out there too. There are slow times, like for instance, now, there is no practices during the week, but they do have some games on Saturdays. But, and then there's also some Saturdays I saw on their schedule where they don't have anything out there right now.
Well, so you, you cannot, well, because that was the, that was the note I wrote down here, that this agreement does not identify the number of days in a week to be scheduled, so it leaves it open to seven days a week, and you've actually identified a seven-day-a-week scenario.
Correct. I mean, I guess what I want to say was, in years past, they had it seven days a week, and it was pretty much an open checkbook, they could use it whenever that they wanted, from dusk to dawn, and like, which Chairperson Danzel said is, you know, we had it till all the way, what, seven, eight o'clock at night? So we're, we're putting pretty firm limitations on that compared to what they've used in the past.
Okay. Could I ask about the traffic plan? Did not someone from the county come and take a look?
Yes, someone did come from the county look, and it was informed that aside from events, the load was appropriate for the field. The issue really comes from not necessarily a, a traffic study, but what we would call a transportation, parking, and management plan that's connected to events, TPMP, as we would call it, which most facilities would have on major events as well. And so the issue really comes from coordinating access and egress and looking at the spaces. But for the regular load on that park, it's been determined that the, the access and egress is fine for a regular load on that park, that would be practices. The issue does come in events, and it needs, and we do utilize the club we have in the past, and will continue to do so, to identify that, organize that, and make sure that that's properly done. So there is a plan that needs to be put in place when there is the one, the one tournament that we would do in August.
Vice Chair Sung?
Brian, I need to address something. Go over again the schedule for the practices. You said is Friday is a practice day, and Monday? So Monday through Thursday. Monday through Thursday. They would have access up to four fields, but, you know. Till what time? From four to dusk. Oh, four to dusk. And then on Fridays, just one field, and that one field would be used for practice, and that's going to be, you know, the one, what they consider field number one. So basically, during the summer, daylight savings time, they'll be using all that time as they can. This time of year, it gets dark at, what, 5:30, they're out of there? And currently, right now, they don't have practices Monday through Friday to my. Because it would be, they get out of school at 10:30. Yeah, so there's no practices now. So the, most of your, your play would be during the summer, when the light, daylight savings kicks in, and they have more of the daylight to work with? Spring, summer, then, you know, obviously, the fall starts falling back again. And they're out of there, but, okay, on that Friday one, you said that there, I thought, I heard like a four or six o'clock time. On Saturdays, we have reduced their time to eight to four, which they used to go till dusk. On Sundays, they used to go till dusk on Sundays with the whole park for practices, with occasional games, and I proposed yesterday, I let the Union Sacramento FC know that I want, I want to restrict that time on Sundays to eight in the morning to 2:00 PM with only one field usage, so the rest of, three-fourths of the park's going to be open, and after two o'clock, there's no usage on Sundays. So then the neighbors have the park for Sunday afternoons. And, and we'll have a district representative policing that type of activity for when they're out of there? Because that, that makes a big difference. When they're out of there by four o'clock or 4:30 on the weekends, that's, that's when I like to go to the park. When the sun's a little bit lower, it's, you know, not as hot, not in the middle of the day, and that's my park there, and I'd like to be able to walk through it and not have a bunch of people yelling at their children, "Get in there!" "Kick the ball!" You know, okay, okay, thanks. I think this is going to work out. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sung. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I, I move that we authorize the district administrator to execute a revised memorandum of understanding MOU with Union Sacramento FC, formerly Capital Athletic Soccer Academy, CASA, for the use of Larchmont Community Park.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Sung. Do I hear a second? Do not hear a second.
Hmm.
Do I hear a new motion?
How do we request to make a modification to it? I'm not really quite sure what the process is to that.
Did I miss a motion, a meeting?
Do I amend it? Is that?
You can amend the motion.
Amend the motion? Okay. Well, I would like to see language added in there that we, they pay fees based upon each of the leagues they play, play in. So if they play U.S. club soccer in the spring, but then play CYSA North in the fall, I think we should be collecting fees for each of those different leagues, and if there's other leagues they play in, however many leagues they play in, because the players change a lot from league to league, from team during the year, knowing from my kit, my experience with youth soccer. So how do I word that?
So Mr. Rais, what you're asking for, I'm going to state it, and then you agree or disagree. I move the Board of Directors authorize the district administrator to execute a revised memorandum of understanding MOU with Sacramento, with Union Sacramento FC for the use of Larchmont Fields being charged by season. Correct, Minister Rais?
That would be correct. That's fairly similar to the proposal we have on the table for little league to pay for their second season or their fall season as well. So the defining issue would be same child in a second season on that property.
So do I need to now say that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move the Board of Directors authorize the district administrator to execute the revised memorandum of understanding, where do I put the amendment part in there, sorry? With Union. Sorry, with Union Sacramento FC for the use of the Large Mont Community Park, with the amendment to charge per playing league or season.
Per child?
Per child, per season.
Per child, per season.
I have a modified motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Leinbach?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloane?
Aye.
And Director Danzel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F2.
Item F2 is a resolution, it's adopt resolution 15 backslash 16 dash 35, approving the Montalena Joint Community Facilities Agreement with the City of Rancho Cordova. I want to clarify, this is, we use similar language for different functions, and I'm going to have Laura Taylor sort of briefly explain the mechanism here. I don't want it to be confused with a joint use agreement. This is a mechanism of funding for developments that is very common. It was used in Sun Ridge, a couple of other areas in the district. So I'll let Laura Taylor explain the mechanics.
Okay, so what this Joint Community Facilities Agreement allows is for the City of Rancho Cordova to issue bonds in order for, to pay for the construction of infrastructure related to the Montalena development. That infrastructure is roads and sewers and, you know, all the public utilities as well as public parks. And so the developer may choose to construct their parks with proceeds from the bond sale. This is pretty standard operating procedure. It's been a while since one's come through here because of the, you know, the economic climate, but the last one that I know of was a one for the North Douglas Development, which utilized the same type of agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any questions? Director?[1798.42]